Good evening, everyone. This is the December 16, 2019 Westminster City Council meeting. I will ask all of you at this time, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Congratulations to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Finch, would you take the role, please?
Mayor Atchison.
Here.
Counselor Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights.
Here.
Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor Vols.
Here.
Okay, before we get started and I go on to the next item, let me read a quick statement for you. The Planning Commission meeting for Uplands rescheduled early 2020 at City Hall. A public hearing in consideration of three proposed comprehensive plan amendments for the Uplands development, formerly Rose Hill and Pillar of Fire, has been rescheduled from Tuesday, December 17th to early 2020. Final date has not been picked yet. Public notification will be posted per Westminster Municipal Code. The public hearing is for the consideration of three proposed comprehensive plan amendments within the proposed Uplands development and does not include the developers' applications for the preliminary development plan, annexation, and rezoning. Those applications also require public hearing and consideration before the Planning Commission and City Council. The development is located in the vicinity of West 84th Avenue and Federal Boulevard. Recent for the rescheduling is that posted notice for the December 17th public hearing is inadequate. Initially posted for the December 17th hearing date was adequate, however, weather conditions damaged the signs, causing them to be illegible and noncompliant with Section 11513 of the Westminster Municipal Code. So, in case all that doesn't mean anything is, there was a Planning Commission hearing scheduled for this for tomorrow night, but because of the weather destroyed the signs to the point they were illegible, we are required to comply with the law and make sure they're adequately posted. So, as soon as those new signs are put up and they're reposted, that will then notify you of the date and will also be posting that on the website for the city. Okay, now, let's try to move on. First item on the agenda is the consideration of the minutes of the December 9th meeting. Mr. Vols.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council approve the minutes of the December 9th, 2019 meeting as presented.
Mr. Demont.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, the motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is presentation of the 2019 Digital Cities Award. Mr. Seymour, if you would, please.
If I could have IT Director Emily Littlejohn and her staff. Let's go that way. Thank you very much. Art, you could introduce the staff that's here tonight?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Brian Schuler, he's our J.D. Edwards Software Engineer expert. Randy Land, he's a lead software engineer in charge of all the application development, the websites, things of that nature. Larry Garlic, IT assistant or IT services administrator, he takes care of a lot of the stuff for us that a lot of us don't like to. My name is Art Ray. I'm the Software Engineering Manager for the city.
Thank you very much. The purpose tonight is, once again, to honor this outstanding staff because this year, the City of Westminster took second place in the Digital Cities Survey 2019 Information Technology Award. And Counselor Vols was lucky enough to receive this also in San Antonio as part of NLC, so we appreciate that. But, a little bit about this, the E-Republic Center for Digital Government is a national research and advisory institute that advises technology policies and best practices in the state and local government. The center conducts an annual nationwide digital class survey to evaluate how well cities are doing in achieving and demonstrating the characteristics of a digital city. In 2019, the City of Westminster submitted a comprehensive 42-page survey application highlighting current status, past year achievements, and the future plans in 10 categories. Strategies and practices related to these characteristics are reflected throughout the 2019 Information Technology Strategic Plan document. An outstanding team of dedicated and highly skilled information technology department staff, combined with the support and effort of the City Council, City Manager's Office, and other city departments, have been key in achieving this award. The City of Westminster was awarded a second-place ranking in a population category of 75,000 to 125,000. This is the 17th year Westminster has achieved top-10 ranking nationwide, and Westminster was one of only three cities in Colorado selected in this category. Winners are posted on the Center for Digital Government's website, and the digital government hosted an award reception at NLC, as I mentioned, in San Antonio. It's probably a little warmer down there than it is here right now. And so, we want to thank this group for its outstanding efforts, and to recognize them, we, once again, have the word to share all of you. So, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Art, thank you and Emily and all the rest of the group down there. All right, the next item on our agenda is City Communication. This is the period of time that we open up the microphone to the public. For you, if you've not been here and done this before, this is a one-way conversation. You do all the talking, we listen, and then somebody from staff, if there's a necessary, will get back to you and try to get you the answers. Your time limit is for five minutes. The green light comes on when your time starts. The yellow gives you a warning that you have one minute left, and the red means your time is up. This is open to you to testify on anything or bring forward any item that you desire. One thing we do ask is that we do have public hearings scheduled. If you're here for a specific public hearing, which is later on the agenda, save your comments till that time. At this time, I'll open up the microphone to anyone who has, and I will start with those who've signed up. John Richardson.
Sir, my name is John Richardson. I live here in the City of Westminster. I live over off of Independence by Stanley Lake on West 96th Drive. Last week, I visited your Department of Community Development. Department of Community Development? I am one told by them, they told me, that I was one of over 7,000 Westminster residents that were affected by the hailstorm that blew through here in July. I had to wait till October to have my solar panels removed because of the backlog of work. My new roof was installed on October 17th. I am still waiting today to have an inspector come and inspect my roof. The solar company will not install my solar panels back up there until the City of Westminster has done an inspection. I came in, like I said last week, to talk to the Department of Community Development. They told me that they were weeks behind, that there was currently over 900 people between where they are now and where I am, and that could go even further depending on if a home was pending sale for a roof to be inspected. I came back, they did tell me that my roofing company could ask for a third-party inspector to do that inspection. I did call my roofing company. They have been paid. They do not care about that anymore, so they have not called me back. I came back today, on that date, last week when I came in, I was told by the lady to, it was almost in silence, "Talk to your city council, like there's something that you can do that they can't do." Today, I came back in, this was the letter that my roofing company sent to Tesla, doesn't have anything on it, looks like I typed it up. I came back in today to see if I could get something on City of Westminster letterhead, which they told me was absolutely out of the question, and again, they told me, "Contact your city counselor." We have asked for more roofing inspectors, and it's not being done. So, I don't know what it is that you can do to speed that up, or it almost sounds like they've asked for something and you've refused to do it. I don't know that, you know? So, that's what I'm here for, is to see what can be done to speed up this process about getting, I'm sure I'm not the only one in Westminster that is facing this problem. Like I said, there's 7,000 people, and they did tell me because of the project over here at the old mall, that some of these inspectors were tied up for weeks in that, and it could, you know, that they have what? I think they told me there was four inspectors on the city's payroll, and they can do about four inspections a day, and it's, my last bill went up over $225 without the solar on there. So, it's going to cost me a few thousand dollars to get, until we get my roof inspected and I can get the solar panels back on. That's not something I planned for.
Okay.
So, that's it.
Don't go away. Just have a seat.
All right.
Amber Reimer.
Good evening. My name is Amber Reimer, and I have been a resident of Westminster for 19 years. I live near 108th and Wadsworth. I am here to ask you to support the passage of a consent resolution by the City of Westminster that would allow newly arriving refugees to continue to be placed within our community in compliance with Executive Order 13888. This executive order directs that the Secretary of State and Secretary of Health and Human Services shall resettle refugees only in areas where both state and local governments consent in writing to the resettlement of refugees in those respective areas. I believe Westminster should pass a local consent resolution to demonstrate our support for our newest refugee neighbors and for our existing neighbors who are hoping to reunite with family members approved for resettlement in the United States. On the subject of refugee resettlement, it is important to note that refugees are the most extensively vetted individuals to enter the United States undergoing 18 to 24 months of extreme vetting. I volunteer as an English-as-a-second language tutor to refugees and immigrants in our community. My family has also volunteered as cultural mentors to newly resettled refugee families from places as diverse as Afghanistan and the Democratic Republic of Congo. It has been a privilege to get to know these families, to watch our children play together, and hear their expressions of gratitude for having a safe place to raise their families. They are happy to be here. They have taught me so much about hospitality and generosity in the way they graciously invite my family into their homes and share what little they have with us. In addition to the moral aspect of welcoming refugees who are fleeing violence and war in their home communities, according to Colorado's Department of Human Services on Colorado.gov, a recent study showed that in Colorado, from 2007 to 2017, four new jobs were created for every refugee welcomed. For every dollar the state invests in refugees, it gets back $1.23 in state and local taxes, and $1.68 is generated in industry activity. Occupations employing the greatest number of refugees have experienced a growth of over 100% from 2011 to 2016. Refugees are filling these critical labor gaps that otherwise would hinder economic growth and expansion of Colorado businesses. For every dollar of assistance received and earned by refugees, $25.49 is generated throughout the economy. It makes economic sense for us to be a welcoming community. As these statistics show, investing in refugees to help them establish lives in our local communities lays the groundwork for net economic benefits in future years. And I don't know if I can give these to you or if you want these, these are from the Colorado.gov website where all those statistics have come from. Thank you for allowing me the time to share. I hope Westminster can pass this resolution to continue to be the welcoming community that I've grown to love over the past 19 years, and I would love to chat with anybody individually, with personal stories or any more information about refugees. It's something I'm very passionate about, so thank you.
That's the only two people I had who signed up for tonight. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to come forward for public comment at this time? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is the Report of City Officials. Mr. Tripp.
First off, I want to tell everybody, happy holidays, and we won't see you for three weeks or so, but I hope you enjoy your time away, and it's well-deserved. I appreciate having had the work with all of you, most of you for most of the year, and a couple of new people just for a month or so. I look forward to the upcoming year. There was a comment made earlier by a citizen regarding his roof, and I won't reiterate all that except to be clear for the public record that the responsibility for staffing employees in the city to meet these requirements is mine. The councils that I've worked for, including this one, have always been very generous about making sure we had the right funds, and I have the latitude to hire people to get the work done that's necessary to get done. I know that our Community Development Director spoke with you, sir, in the back, and we'll certainly work through that. But, just to be really clear about it, whenever I hear things like, I hear that all of you sitting up here, these seven elected officials who have an awful lot of responsibility, aren't doing your job, if that job's not getting done the right way, it's me not doing my job, sir. So, just to be really clear about it, these folks take care of the big picture and take care of that budget, and it's my job to take care of those needs that are on a day-to-day basis. So, appreciate you coming in, and hopefully, we'll be able to take care of your issue. That's it. Thank you.
All right, Counsel, any comments? Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I would also like to extend a happy holidays to everyone. I know many people will be traveling, and so, please be safe, be careful. We look forward to seeing you in the new year. Counselor Demont and myself were able to attend a meeting with Governor Polis last week. It was on the Jefferson County side of our city, and it concerned the Jeffco County as well as the different municipalities contained within that county, so there were representatives from all over, including leaders of faith and leaders in the municipalities, leaders in the different government entities, the business entities. It was a very big group, and we were able to discuss many issues. There were 10 different tables, and the way it was structured was that we were assigned to two tables, and then we moved to a third table of our choice. Counselor Demont will speak to his own tables, but we were very careful to choose very different tables so that we were having a voice at different, in different areas, and being able to extend not only our ideas for what is important to our city, but what is important to how our city interacts with our counties. So, it was a great evening, very educational, learned a lot, met a lot of people, really enjoyed it, and I will tell you that I think the biggest takeaway I took from it was how important our county values our municipalities, and that we all work together as a local region to achieve the meeting needs for our public safety, our housing, and our health care, and many, many other different topics. So, it was a great meeting. Also, this last Saturday was Second Saturday in historic Westminster, and Counselor Smith and myself went down and had a cup of coffee at the Creative Corner, did a little shopping, and it was a great day, and I have to say, I enjoyed seeing Santa Claus, so. And congratulations to our digital department. I am very impressed. It says so much when our city wins awards for their work, their hard work. It shows innovation, it shows thoughtfulness, it shows that we are leading the way in the world, and I'm very proud to be part of a city that wins so many awards, but especially this particular award. So, thank you for your hard work.
Ms. Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to say thank you to everyone for coming out tonight, and thank you for voicing your concerns and your frustrations. I know I am confident that staff will reach out to you. I also want to recognize some members that are here and some that are not. There are members of our community who have applied to serve on our boards and commissions. And a couple Saturdays back, Council had a very difficult task of having to choose among a really great pool of candidates who best to serve these different boards and commissions, and we are just so fortunate as a community that we have so many folks that want to give back. Some are in the room tonight, so thank you, and for those that we will appoint later tonight, I also appreciate you. I also have to recognize our IT department for their consistent commitment to excellence in providing IT services to the city. I believe 16 or 17 years in a row, is that correct? That's impressive. My understanding is the only year we didn't get it was a year we didn't apply, so we really have a dedicated team of professionals. As we are all going into the holiday season, enjoying the new year, enjoying festivities, I hope we'll all remember how fortunate we are to have our first responders who are still working and don't get to be with their families, those who work at our water treatment facilities, and all the various, you know, from plowing the streets, all the different things that still happen so that we can be safe and enjoy our holidays. Hope you all have a good one.
Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on the item that Counselor Scully shared, I was able to meet on the transportation table, education, and mental health. It was a really neat event from my perspective, just the different groups of leaders that were brought together, that the governor genuinely walked around and listened to what we were talking about is affecting our communities locally, so it was a great opportunity for us to share that, as well as a nice facility, Red Rocks Community College. I teach there adjunct, so it was nice to visit there and see former Counselor Haney, who served with us for the last year. The last thing I'd say is happy holidays for me to you all. I hope that you have a safe holiday season, and that we'll see you in the new year.
Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy holidays to everyone. Wanted to point out the fact that we had a fantastic lighting ceremony in the plaza two weeks ago, but also, the visits by Santa continue. The city, in cooperation and along with the Westminster 710 Rotary, had Santa also there this last Saturday evening from 5 till 7. No, we did not force our two-year-old grandson in there, it was just all the yelling and screaming that went along with it that made it look like that, but want to say too that Santa will be back from 5 to 7 again this week in front of City Hall for those who didn't get a chance to catch him last week, and hot chocolate and cider for all.
Any other comments by Counsel? Mr. Demont, you had something else? Oh, jumping ahead. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. It's a group of routine matters on, acted by a single motion. The Council has reviewed the Consent Agenda and want to ask to have this item removed, so, Mr. Demont, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Council adopt the Consent Agenda, item 8A.
Ms. Scully.
Second.
Motion and a second. If you would, Counsel, please do so with your buttons. And we have a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is Appointments and Resignations. This is Resolution Number 27. Ms. Sights.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 27, reappointing members and appointing new and alternate members to the Environmental Advisory Board, Historic Landmark Board, Human Services Board, Inclusivity Board, Parks, Recreation, Libraries, and Open Space Advisory Board, Personnel Board, Planning Commission, and Special Permit and Licensing Board, respectively.
Ms. Scully.
My second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by Counsel? Ms. Scully.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo a big thank you to everyone who came out and interviewed for the boards and commissions. There were a select number of openings at this time, but there will be more openings, there always are, and if you weren't selected this time, there are more opportunities. If you are interested in being a part of a board and you are not currently able to serve on a board, whether you were not selected or whether you just don't have personal time in your life to really make that level of commitment, I would encourage you to go to our website, look at the different boards that we have, and find a board that really piques your interest, and make a New Year's resolution to just attend those meetings. They are public, they are open, they are fascinating, and I personally did that before I was on City Council. I would just go to various meetings. The one that I was the most consistent with was the Inclusivity Board, but I did attend all of the boards at one time or another just to become informed on what was going on in my city. The people that serve on our boards, those boards do a lot of the lifting and the work of our City Council. The mayor always says that they save us millions of dollars, and I believe it. So, please, reach out, get involved. This is a great way to do it without having to run for City Council.
Any other comments from Counsel?
I also have to recognize our IT department for their consistent commitment to excellence in providing IT services to the city. I believe 16 or 17 years in a row, is that correct? That's impressive. My understanding is the only year we didn't get it was a year we didn't apply. So, we really have a dedicated team of professionals. As we are all going into the holiday season, enjoying the new year, enjoying festivities, I hope we'll all remember how fortunate we are to have our first responders who are still working and don't get to be with their families, those who work at our water treatment facilities, and all the various, you know, from plowing the streets, all the different things that still happen so that we can be safe and enjoy our holidays. Hope you all have a good one.
Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To follow up on the item that Councilor Scully shared, I was able to meet on the transportation table, education, and mental health. It was a really neat event from my perspective, just the different groups of leaders that were brought together that the governor genuinely walked around and listened to what we were talking about is affecting our communities locally. So, it was a great opportunity for us to share that, as well as a nice facility, Red Rocks Community College. I teach there adjunct, so it was nice to visit there and see former Councilor Haney, who served with us for the last year. The last thing I'd say is happy holidays for me to you all. I hope that you have a safe holiday season and that we'll see you in the new year.
Mr. Seymour?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and happy holidays to everyone. Wanted to point out the fact that we had a fantastic lighting ceremony in the plaza two weeks ago, but also the visits by Santa continue. The city in cooperation and along with the Westminster 710 Rotary had Santa also there this last Saturday evening from 5 till 7. No, we did not force our two-year-old grandson in there. It was just all the yelling and screaming that went along with it that made it look like that. But I want to say too that Santa will be back from 5 to 7 again this week in front of City Hall for those who didn't get a chance to catch him last week. And hot chocolate and cider for all.
Any other comments by council? Mr. Demont, you had something else? Oh, jumping ahead. All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. It's a group of routine matters on, acted by a single motion. The council has reviewed the consent agenda and want to ask to have this item removed. So, Mr. Demont, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city council adopt the consent agenda, item 8A.
Ms. Scully?
Second.
Motion and a second. If you would, council, please do so with your buttons. And we have a unanimous vote. Next item on the agenda is appointments and resignations. This is resolution number 27. Ms. Sights?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 27, reappointing members and appointing new and alternate members to the environmental advisory board, historic landmark board, human services board, inclusivity board, parks, recreation, libraries, and open space advisory board, personnel board, planning commission, and special permit and licensing board, respectively.
Ms. Scully?
I second.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by council? Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to echo a big thank you to everyone who came out and interviewed for the boards and commissions. There were a select number of openings at this time, but there will be more openings. There always are. And if you weren't selected this time, there are more opportunities. If you are interested in being a part of a board and you are not currently able to serve on a board, whether you were not selected or whether you just don't have personal time in your life to really make that level of commitment, I would encourage you to go to our website, look at the different boards that we have, and find a board that really piques your interest and make a New Year's resolution to just attend those meetings. They are public, they are open, they are fascinating, and I personally did that before I was on city council. I would just go to various meetings. The one that I was the most consistent with was the inclusivity board, but I did attend all of the boards at one time or another just to become informed on what was going on in my city. The people that serve on our boards, those boards do a lot of the lifting and the work of our city council. The mayor always says that they save us millions of dollars and I believe it. So, please, reach out, get involved. This is a great way to do it without having to run for city council.
Any other comments from council? All right, this item is a roll call vote. Ms. Fitch, would you please?
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Councilor Sights?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Volz?
Yes.
Thank you. And I'm not sure why, but on the last vote, when we were voting on the consent agenda, the vote total showed up incorrectly. Okay. Sorry, that was a 6-1 vote on...
It was a 7-0.
That's what I gave. Yeah, I just saw the screen for some reason didn't show the correct total, but it was a 7-0 vote. All right, and a roll call vote on resolution 27 is also a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is a public hearing and first reading on council's bill number 48 referencing the vacation of a portion of Hooker Street and Westminster Station Drive, understanding there is no report by the city staff. Counselors, is there any questions from the council in regards to this application? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing to see if there's anyone in the audience who has any questions, our objections, or support for the resolution for this council's bill number 48. If you could all just line up here in one big line. Okay, all right, nobody's coming. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and ask the council to take action on council's bill number 48. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to pass council's bill number 48 on first reading vacating portions of Hooker Street and Westminster Station Drive rights of way as shown on the final plat for Westminster Station filing number one subdivision.
Mr. Demont?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, we will go with a roll call vote. Ms. Fitch?
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes. And I need one more light somewhere.
Push it again. Hers is being funny tonight.
Now we got it. All right. And that passes on a 7-0 vote.
It's not her.
All right, next item up is item number 28. This is resolution 28, item 10B. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 28 authorizing the city manager to sign a repurchase option in post-closing agreement with Westminster Hotels LLC for lot 5B Westminster Promenade East, third replat in the substantially the same form as presented.
Ms. Smith?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Sights? All right, done? All right. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Fitch, if you would, please.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Okay, there we go. 7-0. All right, next item on the agenda is resolution number 29. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt resolution number 29 establishing the city of Westminster's 2020 legislative policy statement and lobbying protocols.
Mr. Volz?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Is any discussion by council? Mr. Demont, you had a comment?
I do. I just want to point out, one of the things that was added, or a couple of things that was added since my time on council that we've all agreed is important, is some mental health things that we're looking at to make sure that we're supporting any good policy for mental health. The other one that I'm particularly excited that we added to was supporting any legislation that might come forward to support aging out foster kids. So, as they transition out of the foster age, that we support them because I know that's a big problem in our society.
Any other council comment? Any none, this is resolution number 29. It's also a roll call vote. Ms. Fitch?
Councilor Seymour?
Yes.
Councilor Scully?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Volz?
Yes.
Mayor Atchison?
Yes.
Councilor Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sights?
Yes.
Motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10D. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the report of the city manager to find that the public interest would be best served by accepting the proposals and awarding the contracts to Salisbury Hill LLC, DBC Irrigation Supply, and Site One Landscape Supply LLC for the purchase of and to provide installation support for baseline systems irrigation, central control equipment for a maximum amount of $1,037,818 with a 10% contingency of $103,782 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $1,100,041,600.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Ms. Smith?
I would just like to know when this was first installed, when the irrigation system was first installed.
Mr.?
Councilor Sights, or excuse me, Councilor Smith, I believe it was in the 1980s and I'm looking at the document here, mid-1980s is when it went in.
It is the original system when the course was first opened.
And nothing has been updated since?
There've been kind of routine repairs and maintenance of it along the way, but this is essentially the first complete overhaul, complete replacement of the system. It's timely also in that there's some technology available today that's going to provide some water savings.
And so, I saw that there was two different businesses that we were going to contract with, is that correct?
I'm going to turn now to staff who reviewed these bits, the director or our parks manager, please.
Just for the record, the director of the Parks, Recreation, Libraries, and Open Space Mr. Gink, and then also from the staff is Mr. Lance Johnson. Gentlemen, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Just to make sure I understood the question, was there was a selection of two companies? Was that the question?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Yes, there were two companies selected. We've got, both carry the same system. This is such a large project, we're basically replacing 200 computers throughout the entire city. So, in order to move the progress along, selecting two vendors in our best interest, it also gives us more availability to equipment, to parts, availability, that type of thing. So, we thought going to the two vendors would be in our best interest instead of going to the one vendor because it's a large project.
And so, with that, my concern is that having two vendors would be problematic in the future in that one might have upgrades or updates versus another. So, has staff vetted those pros and cons as far as what that might look like for future use?
Yes, both vendors carry, is the same system from both vendors. So, any proprietary things that come through that baseline system would go to, either vendor would have those. So, we have the option to use either vendor when we have those updates that come along.
But that's not contractually, right? That's based on we will provide this in the future, that's not we will provide this for 20 years out, correct?
Correct. If we needed something, if there's an update to the baseline system through either one of those vendors in the future, then that would be another contract we'd look at, we would bid that out and see who has the best pricing if we're going to install different updates into the field. Based on the warranty also, we have a lot of different options in play as far as warranty goes to with the system.
And that wasn't anything from staff as far as concern that we would have these two vendors that potentially could cause problematic issues in the future?
No, we don't believe so. In fact, one of the concerns we did have on the other side was the staffing resources on the contract side to be able to complete this large project and the amount of time we'd like it to have completed. So, staff didn't have any concerns about working with two, we actually saw it as advantageous to make sure we had those resources, able to get the project done on time and at that cost we'd like.
Thank you. And my last question is, why now? Why not two years ago? Why now, not why five years from now?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I think that, you know, with our increased efforts on water conservation and what we're trying to do with, and I think we talked about it, to potentially up to a 30% reduction in water use with the technologies moving forward, that this is something we thought that we need to move forward now on. As far as why before and that, well, we don't want to delay any further, certainly in the future, to recover those savings. And we've planned this project out, pending council approval, of course, to make sure we reduce as much impacts as possible to the system. As far as previously, Lance, I know the work's been underway since about June, onsite testing and going through some of the equipment, but prior to that, do you have any other?
Well, actually, staff started working on this project a year ago, last fall, and just vetting out how they want to go about handling the process. And we also, with the capital money we are using, that capital money was included in this, in the 19 to 20 budget. So, we had thought about this basically three years ago, just trying to accrue the funds in order to be able to do this project. We knew it was going to be a big project. So, we've been working on this more or less for the last three years.
Okay. And then my last question, thank you for entertaining my thoughts, is what happens, and I think you kind of alluded to it in your answers before, but what happens, has staff looked at, what happens when the company no longer provides the system that we are implementing currently?
That's a wonderful question. We have that right now. We have cases where staff is manufacturing parts, even printing, I believe, in some cases, parts to, you know, replace some of the pieces that have gone defective. So, what we believe is that by working with these two companies and the parts that we've chosen and the research as it's been done is to get as much life as we possibly can out of the systems. But Lance, you have anything to add?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there's never any guarantees, but this company's been around for quite a while. It's not been the industry as long as like Rainbird has or Toro, but it has been around for at least 20 to 25 years. The industry itself has gone to a kind of a very technological, and so a lot of companies have the same kind of variations of different types of software and hardware packages. So, I think in the long run, if we did, if the company, for whatever reason, went out of business or whatever, I think we'd be able to find a different company to supplement, kind of along the same lines. So, I don't think staff's too concerned about the issues if something would happen with baseline.
One last question is that, I just lost my brain. I'll come back to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Don't go anywhere. Two quick questions.
Sure.
First, do you, on the line of length, so obviously this was back in the 1980s, the current system, so do you have at least a sense of how long you expect this to last?
Based on, I mean, yes, the Maxicom Rainbird system we currently have, I think was installed late 80s, early 90s. So, it's been in the ground for almost 30 years. I guess our hope would be that this system we would have around for 30 years, but I think with technology and the way things change so rapidly, having that same exact system for 30 years is probably a long shot. But I think the general sense of how the system operates will be around for quite some time. It's just a matter of the upgrades with technology and how we take those and advance those into the new system.
So, that spurs a different question, so I'm sorry. So, I'll have two more questions. One, do you know, does that, do you anticipate the upkeep to be more expensive as far as like maintaining this system in the long run since it's more advanced than what we had in the past, or do you really know that at this point?
My best educated guess would be that it'd be less maintenance cost to the system because of the higher technology hopefully we're using. At the end, when we finally get to a certain point in the next few years, we're hoping to have Wi-Fi-based communication instead of hardline and Ethernet. So, there's a couple of different advantages there and I think will make it more user-friendly and probably last longer because of those technology upgrades.
Great. As well as on the operation side, saving staff time with alerts and information that otherwise may not, you know, get, and frankly, water conservation as well as far as saving that perhaps some damage that we may not otherwise know about.
That leads into my last question, and I don't remember seeing it in the staff report, but as far as like, do you have kind of an idea of what the return on investment is for this since we are going to be saving water and ultimately the city does have to pay for its own water, just like anybody else?
Yeah, so I would say that the one number we had referenced was about, you know, up to 30% reduction in water use, you know, coupled with water rates and those types of things to pan out, you know, that increase and as well as, you know, the staff, reduction in staff time as well, going out to the sites and inspecting because, you know, trusting that we have upgraded technology that can communicate back to us. Lance, I don't know if you have any...
Yeah, I would say, you know, if you could even save even 20% of our water over the average 10 years, I mean, we're looking at probably a 10 to 15-year return to kind of break even what we put into the system upfront right now.
Great. Lastly, I'd just say thank you for continuing to look at solutions that put our foot forward as far as being a leader in conservancy because I know that's a thing that we talk a lot about in the city. So, I'm always happy to see when the city's stepping up and doing that ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to make sure that people understand, we're not talking potable water. Our systems right now that you're installing are using reclaimed water.
We are using both potable and reclaimed within the park system.
All right. Ms. Smith, you had another question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to know that if this is all of parks and recs that we're focusing on, or is it just certain parts of our city that we're focusing on?
This will be all parks, all of our rightaways, all of our facilities that have any irrigation controllers, so we're covering the entire city.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? If not, we have a motion and a second for item 10D. If you would, ladies and gentlemen, use your lights. And the motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item on the agenda is item 10E. Ms. Scully?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine that the public interest will be best served by approving a sole source purchase of an unlimited users' license and maintenance for JDE Quick Launch from Preferred Strategies LLC for an amount not to exceed $97,200 in 2019.
Mr. Seymour?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion by council? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, this is again, a vote with your light, please. And the motion also passes on a 7-0 vote. Next item up is item 10F. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute a sole source purchase of 50 streetlights from Mountain States Lighting LLC for downtown Westminster in the amount of $171,325 and authorize a construction contingency of $17,000 for a total authorized expenditure not to exceed $188,325.
Mr. Volz?
I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. Comments or questions by council? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question as far as why aren't we asking the developer to provide an installed lighting?
John, you can come to the microphone if you'd like. While you're coming up, I think the short answer to this is going to be, the city made a decision in order to get this development going about five years ago that we would invest in the infrastructure, including street, rightaway, utility, and the lighting and others, and those other sorts of systems, and we'll be maintaining that system in the long term. Anything to add to that, John?
No, thank you.
Ms. Smith, go ahead.
My other question was, was an ICE conducted, an internal cost estimate, conducted for these lightings? I saw that there was a quote provided from the company that we are looking for for the lighting, but I'm just wondering from a governmental perspective if we had an ICE that we conducted.
Mayor and councilman, I ask our development and construction manager, John Burke, to address that question.
Thank you.
Counselor, good question. So, yes, based upon the pricing that we received when the first installation was completed back in 2015, so this pricing is in alignment with that. So, this actually came in lower by about 10 to 15% than what we packaged together last time.
And then, did I understand that Westminster is installing versus a developer installing?
That is correct.
And we're maintaining in the long run, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Smith? All right, Ms. Sights?
Thank you. I just, real quick, um, uh, being part of the council that approved kind of this strategy, I want to make sure I remember correctly, one of the benefits or one of the reasons we decided to do this is it does allow us to recapture, um, a higher land sale price than virgin land would be. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and, and significantly so?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions by council on item 10F? Seeing none, ladies and gentlemen, vote with your lights as well. Motion carries on a seven-o vote. Next item is not at the council, so at this point, we will adjourn as the Westminster City Council, and we will reconvene under the same roll call as the Westminster Housing Authority Special Meeting for December the 16th. This time, I have been asked the board to consider the amendments of the preceding meeting. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the city council approve the minutes of the December 17th, 2018 meeting as presented.
Ms. Sights?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is carried. The only item of business tonight for the Housing Authority is resolution number 72. Mr. Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to adopt resolution number 72, adopting the 2020 Westminster Housing Authority budget.
Ms. Scully?
My second.
I have a motion and a second from members of the board. Are there any comments or questions from any board member? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. Hall and, uh, Ms. Grafton earlier today regarding this, um, this document that's come forward before council. Um, I would just ask that, um, we kind of recap what we talked about as far as, uh, this development. Um, my questions were, uh, what we were necessarily approving as far as council, um, and why there was a discrepancy of not $42,000, and it was $40,000 and plus, or, excuse me, $40,000 plus $2,000 as far as the budget. Could you explain more as far as what that entails?
Mr. Tripp? Mr. Hall, would you please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Um, there are two items anticipated in this budget for 2020. One is a $2,000 interest payment we expect to be making in January related to the repayment of a loan, uh, that the Housing Authority took out some time ago, and, uh, $40,000, uh, which is the anticipated demolition costs associated with taking down the, uh, was commonly referred to as the General Stage Building, a former, um, gas station at the 73rd and Lowell, uh, location on the southwest corner. Be happy to answer any additional questions.
And from what I understand, we're just approving budgetary requirements today, correct?
That's correct. To the extent the Housing Authority would be involved in any, um, development on, on that site, those issues would come forward, uh, before the Housing Authority, city council, as a series of discrete topics related to land disposition, potential rezoning, a whole range of things. But this is simply, um, approving a budget for 2020, and those items would come forward at some later date.
Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Um, just having you talk about the demolition kind of raised some things for me as far as, I'm not concerned about us paying for the demolition, but I am, just want to make a note that moving forward with that demolition, another one that we did down in that same area, I feel was problematic with a lot of the feedback that I got from residents as far as state it was in from the time it was torn down and some safety concerns and how long it took. And I know every project is different, um, but I would just ask that we took those lessons learned and make sure that we don't have some of those same issues when we demolish that building. I think that the residents in that area will probably be excited to see it go because I've heard a lot of complaints about it not being cared for. So, I'm excited to fund that, but also want to make sure that, you know, we're sensitive to some of the things that we saw with some other demolitions down in that area of, of older buildings.
I certainly understand the concerns of the board and, uh, yes, we will endeavor to make every effort to make this go more smoothly than, than the former demolition in that area.
Other comments or questions from the board? Seeing none. Ms. Fitch, this is a roll call vote. If you would, please.
Chairperson Atchison?
Yes.
Board, Board Member Demont?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sights?
Yes.
Board Member Seymour?
Yes.
Board Member Scully?
Yes.
Board Member Smith?
Yes.
Board Member Volz?
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, that motion carries on a seven-o vote. With that, the meeting of the Westminster Housing Authority Special Meeting is now adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, we have one post-meeting item. It's approximately 7:52 at this time. It'll take about 10 minutes, and then we'll reconvene for the one item we have on the post-meeting for the city council. We are adjourned.